With liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Madam Mayor, council members, no.
In that case, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt it.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is items for the good of the city. And here we have something, I think, very special tonight with the introduction of some new employees. And item D1, our planning director, will introduce our new planning technician, Catherine Lee. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here to introduce our new planning technician, Catherine Lee, who goes by Cat. She is a recent graduate of Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, where she studied environmental management and protection and minored in economics. In November, she joined our team from her planning internship with the City of Walnut Creek. During her internship there, she worked closely with the principal planners and the associate director. Some of her projects included developing a comprehensive planning and building a manual for new planners to train and creating a tracking system for all alcoholic beverage permits held by establishments throughout the City of Walnut Creek. Cat also brings an extensive customer service experience from working with the City of Walnut Creek, and then also she worked before Nordstrom. And then I'll conclude with one thing I learned about Cat. I don't usually tell people, especially on the West Coast, but we both actually like country music.
Here's your.
Hi, everyone. I'm so excited to be here today with the City of Arinda. I'm actually from Maraga, so I have a deep appreciation and understanding of the La Marinda community. And I'm really excited to help plan the future of Arinda.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Cat.
Welcome.
Welcome. It's so lovely to see a La Marinda resident on staff. We're so happy with that. And I think we all are grateful that you're joining us. And with this extensive customer service experience, it's something that I think our residents always appreciate, as you'll soon learn. And if you, you're certainly in excellent hands with our planning director, and welcome.
Thank you.
Great. And I think we have another staff, and our public works director, Kristi, will introduce our new facilities superintendent, Ross Fulker, if I'm pronouncing that correctly?
Yes, I believe so. Good evening, City Council. It's my pleasure to introduce Ross Fulker. He comes as well qualified from the Livermore Valley Unified School District, which is a rather large district. It has 18 schools. He was the maintenance manager for that operation, so he had responsibility for all those sites, plus the equivalent of a courtyard and a few other sites. And then in addition to that, he had, he oversees in that position 20, 21 people in terms of crafts and tradespeople. So he understands how things work. I noticed on his desk that he's already got set up his little title as Mr. Fix-It, because you have to fix everything. And he comes as well qualified that way in terms of facilities and grounds and, you know, supervising the different trades. He also has a background as, he was actually in the HVAC field as a sheet metal person. So he's a journeyman in that area. So he's, he comes just in the nick of time since we're out to bid right now with our library HVAC upgrade. So I'm eager to kind of hand that off to him and just say, Ross, figure it out for us. Help us analyze the bids and manage the project. He also has experience in the past with Superior Electric Mechanical and Plumbing with that outfit, with Safeway. He was a maintenance rep there for many years handling their systems. And he, he actually has roots in Arinda since his grandparents lived here in town in the past. So we're happy to have Ross here, so I'll let him say a few words.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here. Like Scott said, I started as a sheet metal worker and transitioned into a college degree after that, and then into the corporate side of construction, then into public construction, and now into public works construction. So I'm excited to lend my experience to the City of Arinda.
Thank you. It sounds like you have an incredible background with not only a knowledge base but a skill base. And I think we're all very, again, under, you're in good shape with Director Kristi there. But the fix-it motto with our HVAC and our library sounds like an amazing opportunity, and we look forward to that. And hopefully, both of you will find the staff here to be just a really warm welcoming group.
So far, so good. I'm on day two, and I'll come back tomorrow.
Fabulous.
That's good.
Thank you. Welcome. Hey, and I did not ask for any public comment on items for the good of the city, but I didn't see any. Next, we have public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council on an item listed on the agenda if the speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. I see no speaker cards for public forum, though we did get one written comment, which I will note for the, that is in the agenda materials, or the public comment materials with tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here this evening in the audience who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent calendar, which is item F for our agenda. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion, unless a council member or a member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Do we have any, do we have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as proposed?
I'll move to adopt as proposed.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that, we have, we have adopted items on our consent calendar, which include items F1 through F5. Next on our agenda is public hearing, but there is, there are no public hearing items tonight. That moves us on to policy matters. This may be one of the quickest times we've gotten to policy matters on our agenda. Item H1 is to discuss the nine council subcommittees and consider adoption of resolution number 04-25, restating and memorializing certain details relating to those subcommittees with the specific recommendation that is listed on our agenda. And so, Madam City Manager, do we have a staff report on that?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, appreciate an opportunity to be here tonight and talk a little bit about these subcommittees. It's, over the years, the council has created various subcommittees that work on specific topics or issues. There's currently nine of those, eight of which were adopted by motion and one adopted by resolution. These subcommittees are advisory to the City Council, and they consist solely of council members, but there are a couple that meet in what we call a two-by-two format with other agencies. In reviewing all these subcommittees, we noticed that certain ones were operating outside of their original intent when we pulled all of their original staff reports. Others haven't met in a long time, and given this, we felt like it was time to maybe revisit and look at modifications to these subcommittees and then take an action to adopt them by resolution once we've got some consistency as to the things that they should be doing, maybe altering the way that they are working currently. So we went ahead and made, staff made some proposed recommended changes. I've got them up on a screen for you, which is trying to summarize what those changes are. As you'll see, we're not making recommendation to make any changes to three of those committees, subcommittees, but we are suggesting recommendations to the remainder of those, starting with the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. It was originally proposed in 2008 and then again revised in 2013. And it was really, at that time, evaluating a specific project in Arinda, and then it got expanded to other non-senior affordable housing projects. We think that there's still potential need for this subcommittee on an as-needed basis, not on a regular meeting basis, and that this committee could potentially consider future rezonings and policies to comply with the state's housing element. We could also have this committee look at proposed affordable housing projects as well as review proposed inclusionary zoning information and policies. And this would be a recommendation body to the City Council. The next one that would have potentially changes to it would be the Downtown Planning and Housing Element Subcommittee. This one in particular was, had a specific purpose when it was originally formed to work with the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel. And the group has been meeting since then outside of the original purview. Given that we were talking about proposing moving some of the housing element items into the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, this proposal would be to rebrand this subcommittee into the Downtown Revitalization Subcommittee. And the work here could be around things we want to do to help grow and promote the business community and the downtown. We would estimate this group could meet quarterly, review any programs or services that would help support the revitalization efforts in the downtown. The next one would be the Infrastructure Committee, which was formed just about a year ago. The work was initially thought to be able to conclude at the end of 2024. That is not the case. We need more time with the Infrastructure Subcommittee, and we're proposing that there'd be a new limited duration through the end of 2025. Under the City School Subcommittee, when it was originally envisioned, it was supposed to meet maybe once or twice a year. That's not the common practice. It's been meeting more regularly. So we were suggesting changing the meeting cadence to at least quarterly, if not more than quarterly. On the Wilder Subcommittee, that was originally developed to be working with the owner of the property at that time, discussing issues and commitments related to the development agreement and work towards resolution on outstanding issues. In reality, the Subcommittee has been also meeting with the Homeowners Association on a variety of topics. Staff is then recommending that the Subcommittee purview be modified to include those meetings that are happening with the Homeowners Association. And then work that was related to the properties adjacent that will ultimately be coming into the GAD. Once the GAD takes formal transfer of those properties, we would recommend that this committee sunset to ensure equity between the communities, that there's not one homeowners association having a Subcommittee with the City Council while the others do not. Lastly, was the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Action Subcommittee. This group was established in 2020 on the heels of a lot of the turmoil that the national conversation around race. And since then, it's met once in 2021. It hasn't met. Staff recommended that the purview and purpose be broadened potentially beyond just a school district partnership and recommend that it could seek to further inclusivity and diversity throughout the community, including review of programs and services the city might offer, as well as work with the business community to develop actions that could potentially promote diversity in the community. So that one would just meet on an as-needed basis. So those are the changes that staff is recommending for these subcommittees. I met with Mayor Mulcany to discuss this, to make sure that she was comfortable with these recommendations, since she is the one that would make recommendations for appointments. And I believe you were comfortable with what was being proposed.
Yes.
And I just leave it up to the council to discuss any of these modifications and give us feedback. Ultimately, tonight, we want to leave with, if we can, a resolution adopting the, re-adopting these subcommittees.
And there was also, I want to thank our city manager for really diving into this process rather than simply, you know, cutting and pasting what we've done before and making sure we're doing some cleanup here, because also some of these, these committees, subcommittees, it's important for them to be adopted by resolution as well.
We do believe that's the case, and I also want to thank Sherri for pulling together all the background information and making this, and then working with those on appropriate, putting the appropriate Brown Act categories to each one of these. So you'll see in your adopting resolution, there's an exhibit that the staff report kind of outlines the things that we'd like to see potentially change. And then the resolution exhibit A will have what we would suggest is the purview purpose, timing, meeting schedule, and Brown Act type.
Questions from council members?
I have a question. I'm new to all of this, so I apologize. But do the subcommittees only include council members and staff? Or do they also include interested citizens or other people in the community who might have something to add to the topic?
So these would be open to the public. All the ones that are in the, the nine that have been mentioned are all open for public meetings. So if somebody wanted to come and make a public comment, they could certainly do that. The two-by-two committees, as I mentioned, are also with other agencies. So that, and again, those are also public meetings. And I believe the Library Facility Steering Committee has a separate composition that was, is basically outlined in the library agreement. So there really isn't anything that you could.
But for instance, the Public Safety Subcommittee would not also include the fire chief because he's not an Arinda, City of Arinda employee?
That wouldn't, I, right now, that is, this is really more, I think, about policing than it is.
It is.
Anything else.
That, that, I mean, the title is broader than that. Yeah, I can just tell you from being at the meetings that the, that Subcommittee consists of two council members, and the meetings have historically included the two council members appointed to that Subcommittee, as well as our chief of police and our city manager.
Right now, the purview looks like it's fairly limited to police, public safety, and not fire, public safety.
And for instance, the Downtown Revitalization Subcommittee would not include someone from the Chamber of Commerce or some other organization within Arinda that might have some guidance or input into that subject.
That's correct, currently. But they are certainly invited, they would be invited to attend meetings.
Yeah, if I can just comment on that, that the one meeting that they had in 2023, we had citizens who were very involved. We had a planning staff member. So we did have a pretty good mix on that one. People did attend from the public. And in the Wilder Subcommittee also, that one is attended by some of the HOA representatives and just concerned citizens. But not in a, not in an appointment way. They just, based on the meeting agenda.
Okay. And then the notices of these meetings would go out through our normal system so that the public would be aware when the meetings, and if they had an interest in coming, they would know about it.
That's correct. The city clerk provides the proper notice to pursue the Brown Act.
Right, and the city maintains mailing list, email list on our website that citizens and business people can subscribe to. So when we post an agenda for any of these committees, we email to the people who signed up for, that were interested in that subject matter. Just, I don't know if this adds further clarity or is more confusing. Hopefully, it adds clarity, Councilmember Hoxey. But I think the distinction is when we, what we call the subcommittees are really committees where the membership of the committee, except for the Library Facility Steering, right? And the two-by-twos, which engage with other entities, are the membership otherwise of a Subcommittee is two council members. But then we do have, you know, other commissions and committees that have a membership that includes members of the public, where a council member serves as the liaison. And I think that's the sort of distinction, as I, as I perceived it.
Just, just trying to.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a, good question.
So to speak.
Of course.
How this really, and then after the Subcommittee meets, I assume there's some sort of report back to the full council as to what was discussed.
Yeah, I mean, typically, that's part of the council members' reports from the DICE.
Yeah. Any, any other questions? No? Okay. I did not see any public comment on item H1A. Are there any members of the public here that would like to make public comment on item H1? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close public comment for that and bring it back to the council for discussion.
I'm, I'm not seriously opposed to leaving it, but I do have a feeling that the Public Safety Subcommittee isn't really that needed because what this Subcommittee is doing gets presented, or I think should get presented to the full council, at least annually. It would seem like what is the scope of the Subcommittee could simply go back to being a report to the full council once a year because it never has any participation. It hasn't for three years from members of the public. And there really isn't anything additionally for our staff or our police chief or whatever to do other than a reporting function. So I guess I'm kind of of the mind that if we didn't have the Public Safety Subcommittee, I guess the alternate to that would be what Councilmember Hoxey mentioned. Or I do know that, like, the City of Lafayette has a Public Safety Subcommittee, but its scope is much broader. So it seems to me that it's either a Subcommittee that would be broadened a lot or simply could be eliminated by virtue of bringing it back to a council reporting function.
I agree with you, Councilmember Gee. I feel like the name indicates something broader than just the police report. I've been on, you know, various Zoom meetings where they have reported and public can listen into that, but there's no reason why it couldn't be part of the council's regular business.
I would support that, by the way, because one of the things we'll talk about in our strategic planning is how to get better information sharing when, when information we're all interested in is presented to a Subcommittee. And then council member reports tend to be a little bit brief. And so the idea of just not having a Subcommittee actually sounds like something I support.
Unless the police department feels like it serves a purpose.
I think the chief would be fine with not having an extra Subcommittee.
I mean, I will say, I've served on it the last two years. We've met once a year, and we've had a briefing from the police chief. The first year, I don't recall any members of the public there. This last year, we did get quite a few members of the public, but we might get more in a full council meeting with that briefing. So that, that seems like a, I would support that as well.
Great. I've noted that.
Other, other discussion on other.
If I can build on that, I had a similar thought about the Wilder Subcommittee, which I was on these last years. I don't think we should expand it to include the HOA, because I think the HOA was somewhat improperly. That was a scope change that just happened sort of organically. But if the idea is that it would sunset with the GAD turnover, it really isn't meant to be that this one HOA has its own separate forum other than its relationship with the city manager, which I hope would happen anytime that they've got issues for the city manager. And when you think about the remaining issues with the GAD, we don't need a Subcommittee for that. Those are very much staff level. It's the turnover of the agencies. There's engineering matters. But that's not a Subcommittee level of engagement. So I think we could go ahead and sunset that one as well.
Any other thoughts?
I would, I've never served on the Wilder Subcommittee, so I don't have firsthand experience. But I do know that it's, it was originally formed over the development aspect of, of the, you know, community. And in that sense, it is pretty much over, you know? It's not, the issues that are remaining seem to be either staff interaction issues or issues that are going to come to the GAD board or, because otherwise, you know, the residents of Wilder have all the same access to city staff and council members as any other member of the community. So I'm not sure that its, its original intent sort of seems like it's been fulfilled and the rest of it does, I think, I agree with you, can sort of all be handled through all the other functions that are ongoing. So I, I mean, again, I don't know how, I know that there's been a lot of people in the Wilder community that like having it, so I don't know that that would be, you know, I don't know how strong the sentiment would be about, you know, removing it. But, or maybe we should, maybe we should give it a, a more defined, you know, sunset, like, give it six more months or something and, and then.
I think six more months is fine, because actually it was, it was a really interesting conversation. We covered a wide range of topics. But I think any HOAs would enjoy having that forum. So we should be thoughtful in our strategic planning about how to think about, whether it's neighborhoods or parts of town or HOAs, and, and have these sort of forums. But the Wilder Subcommittee to me felt like it was being singled out in a way that was maybe just something that happened over time, but doesn't feel in attention.
I just know through the campaigning process that at some times, Wilder feels like they're not as fully part of the City of Arinda. And so I would hate to take action tonight that would somehow upset the homeowners in Wilder and make them feel less heard. I think it might be better to have, as Starling, Councilmember Gee, suggested, a planned sunset so that it's not a surprise and so that there's some transition discussion, that everyone feels they're heard.
Don't we make it 12 months, just to sort of have that?
Can we, when do we, do we have an estimated timeline in terms of the?
So Wilder, oh, for the GAD.
Yeah.
No. Okay. There's still outstanding issues that the property owner is working on to get the property in position to be turned over to the GAD. I'll tell you that they are very interested in continuing to meet with city council members. They reached out to me to hold a meeting. I have offered them a meeting with me, which we will be having next Monday with staff. I think I need to make sure it's on staff's calendar, but we're going to go out to see them and talk to them. And depending on tonight's decision, I'll convey to them that there's a limited amount of time remaining on the Subcommittee. But I think they are going to want to meet with you again, in a Subcommittee forum.
So in, and in discussing some of what to do with this Subcommittee, I think a lot of the points that were raised here were also things that the city manager and I were discussing. So I, you know, they're all, I think, very valid points. And it is unusual to have a Subcommittee with, with one neighborhood. That's very unusual. At the same time, yes, Wilder does feel pretty, you know, there's this history, right, of wanting to make sure, I think part of the purpose was to integrate it. I, I mean, I think for now, at least, since we're looking at for this, for this next year, sunsetting the committee after the end of 2025 sounds like it was a sort of a more friendly compromise amendment. Is there consensus on that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think it would be good to not have surprises and, you know, see if we can work through it so that it makes sense to everyone. But at some point, I do think that there really isn't, you know, its existence and why it was formed don't.
Right.
Exist anymore.
Right. And there's always ongoing issues with, you know, for example, Arinda Woods or other homeowners associations, right? So, okay, so I'm hearing that that is an amendment so that the Wilder Subcommittee would sunset at the end of 2025?
Yep.
And that the Public Safety Committee, we could dispense with as a separate Subcommittee and instead have that annual report to the council?
I have some other small comments.
Yes.
If you're wrapping them.
No, I'm just summarizing the consensus we've reached so far, and let's continue discussions, please.
My other comment was, if we're going to sort of adopt by resolution and make this a little more formal, it would be nice to have a little more structure around distinguishing Evergreen Subcommittee from Purpose Subcommittee so that they do time out and need to be affirmatively renewed. Because I think we all feel a little sensitive about. Because I think we all feel a little sensitive about, you know, getting rid of a Subcommittee because they all have constituents who are interested. And so, you know, it's come up on, on several of these. And so what I'd like to do is for anything that's not intended to be an evergreen, to give them either one-year terms or two-year terms, depending on what they're made for, so that we do have to kind of affirmatively say, yeah, we're still working on that. Let's give it another year or two. Specifically on the downtown, because that was originally the working group that was creating the DPP. And then the question was, do we sunset? And we're kind of evolving it into this economic development. But it might be sort of healthy in the spirit of, you know, that was a more project-based one to maybe give that one a two-year time limit that we would then in two years say, okay, do we still need a Subcommittee or is, you know, downtown just kind of part of life in the city? And I also would propose a name change on that one. I'd like to keep the word planning in there. So maybe the downtown revitalization and planning Subcommittee because since the DPP is currently suspended as part of this overall EIR process we're going through, I just thought we might need to incorporate some conversations and to have a Subcommittee already in place that's able to deal with some of those potential issues. I just thought we might as well keep the scope just broad enough to not be only economic development. If you guys agree to that. My last comment is tiny, which is just the, the school two by two. At one point, we thought we were supposed to be monthly and it got really, we could never meet. And Councilmember Hoxie was on it with me and it just, the schedule was all over the place. So I think one thing is to have a flow of four times a year, but we really don't need to meet more often than that. We can always do that spontaneously. There's a particular issue with like the nature area we were working on. And to note that it does not meet during the summer. So when it, when, when school is out, that committee is not going to meet. So that was all my additions.
Yeah, the, the school calendar, the school board doesn't meet in July at all. So I would say quarterly, if you're talking about four meetings a year, you're going to really have one every other month, pretty much during the school year, except maybe December, and that probably would work just fine. So I would say four a year and that quarterly because of the odd schedule. Four times a year would probably be sufficient. And I know the school board has the school board president and one other school board member on the committee. We might consider having the mayor and one other council person on the committee to mirror that so everyone feels like it's being given the same importance from both organizations.
My only reaction to that is that, because I know the mayor here has so many obligatory committees, that I think I would actually recommend keeping self-responsibility for that to be whoever has the most pertinent experience or availability.
I, or maybe mayor or mayor per town, just to give the school board the sense that the city is taking the committee as seriously as they.
Just okay. What, what is, sorry, what is the, it's the school board president and another school board member?
Correct.
Okay. Other? So it's, I mean, Councilmember G, any comments on?
No, I, you know, I, I understand what you just said in terms of, you know, making it sort of an equal kind of a thing if possible. I also understand what the vice mayor said, that our mayor has an awful lot of obligations. But no, I don't have a, I don't have any other, other comments. You know, I think it's, it's been a good exercise to look at everything again.
Mayor, would you like me to summarize the amendments as I?
I will.
Oh, great.
That would be wonderful.
All right, so what I've heard is, and these will be amendments to, you'll have to make them as amendments to the motion, you could say, with staff proposed amendments or your proposed amendments rather. Eliminating the Public Safety Committee, sunsetting the Wilder Subcommittee at the end of 2025, establishing a two-year limit on the downtown revitalization and planning committee and incorporate downtown precise plan into the description. And then on the school two-by-two committee, make it so that it meets four meetings per year and does not meet in the summer. We can make those amendments to the resolution and the exhibits.
Okay. With those amendments to the resolution and exhibits, do we have a council motion to adopt the recommendations?
I'll move that we adopt it as described by our city manager.
Thank you. And do we have a second on that? This is Carl, I'll second. Thank you, Councilmember Hoxie. All in favor of adopting the motion and recommendation with the amendments articulated by our city manager, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none. Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
In terms of next steps? So, and we'll bring this back for, for you to then make your recommendations for the appointments to the Subcommittee that remain. The other thing that we wanted just to note, I think for, we had missed a council liaison position on what's on the next agenda item. So as part of the 21st agenda, we will ask you to make that appointment as well. So I just wanted to make sure that was for the CalShakes liaison.
Thanks. Would it be facetious to ask why we would have a CalShake liaison at this point?
Well, it was relatively, it was established in 2023. And I think the intent of the city council at that time was to also ensure that it started with that, but maybe grew into more of a cultural liaison. So I think for the purposes of figuring out what's going to happen, I mean, we know what's happening with CalShakes, but whether or not you, you can have that conversation as part of.
I think we can have that conversation as part of H, item H2. So we'll do that. So moving on to item H2, which is the city council committee appointment liaison list for 2025. The recommendation is to provide any feedback to me and approve the appointment liaison list as proposed or amended.
Can I ask a question? Are we supposed to be talking about the resolution that was proposed? Are we supposed to adopt?
We just did.
We just did.
You took the motion and the action on the resolution.
That was on the resolution. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. And so now, so now we're moving on to item H2.
Thank you.
Which is the appointment liaison list for 2025 with the exception of the Subcommittee, which we'll come back to us at the next meeting because having just restructured them, we now will go back and make recommendations on those and vote on them at our next meeting. So. G. Do you want?
Mayor members of the council, this one's relatively straightforward. The council has certain bodies, commissions and regional boards where you serve in advisory capacity. Mayor has made her nominations for the council's review and consideration. They are attached to the staff report. We included as part of an amendment to tonight's agenda, the correction to create a list that has both what is current, the current and, and the proposed. And so we wanted to just make sure that you had that as a reference. And I think there was also a modification we needed to make, actually to the staff report that referenced sections of the policies and procedures manual to make sure we have it correctly identified under local boards. So we made those modifications in your addendum to your, to your staff report. So we'll just turn it over to the council for any discussion and consideration of the mayor's appointment recommendations.
And we do have one public comment, so I want to first take questions from the council on this, if any, and then we'll move to the public comment. Any questions? About the staff report? Okay, then for agenda item H2, we have Juliette Dunn.
Good evening, Mayor Malcony, city council member, city staff and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking tonight with my Arinda Chamber of Commerce hat on. Just to be clear, I'm vice president of the Board of Directors for the Arinda Chamber of Commerce. And we've really appreciated the opportunity to have Mayor Malcony as our liaison and look forward to opportunities to continue to work with her. As well as also, we appreciate the support of the other council members as well as city staff. One clarification I did want to make was that in the agenda packet, it shows that our meeting time is on Tuesdays at 8:00 AM. And the correct time actually should be on the third Wednesday of the month at 4:00 PM. And part of the reason for the change is that it had conflicted with the mayor's liaison meeting and we had wanted to participate in that to make that change. So I just wanted to make that change for the record and appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliette. And thank you for your work with the chamber and all the work the chamber does. And I apologize for not catching that error. I should have caught that, having attended your meetings on Wednesdays before. Do we have any other public comment on item H2? Hearing none, I will close a public comment and move this to council discussion. Is there any?
One very small comment. On the subject of the Chamber of Commerce, I did think that if we're going to be redefining the downtown planning to be primarily about downtown revitalization and economic development, ideally, if the Chamber of Commerce liaison could also be on that downtown committee, that there's so much synergy between the two, that feels like a natural.
Any comments? I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm going to ask the city manager if we could then hold on that one appointment and bring it back next week or next meeting when we bring our Subcommittee appointments.
Yep, you can do that.
Then I would, I would propose that we do that. Any other comments?
I'm just going to ask, I'm sure I know the answer. I'm, since Councilmember Riley isn't with us tonight, do we feel good about how she feels about whether she would have any comments or not, or do you know?
I, I think she would feel comfortable with this.
She, I did have an opportunity to speak with her this, this morning and she didn't mention any concerns about the appointments.
Just thought that we should check.
Okay, then if there's no more discussion, do we have a council motion and a second to adopt, approve the appointment liaison with, with the one amendment, with the two amendments? The first being that actually with just holding off on any appointments to the Chamber of Commerce liaison and noting, we will note when we bring that back, that the meetings are on the third Wednesday at 4:00. I believe that's the only amendment. So with that amendment or that we're not going to include the Chamber of Commerce liaison at this point, do we have a motion and a second to approve the appointment liaison list as amended?
I'll move to adopt as amended.
I'll second him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no, any post? None? Thank you. So I think we, actually that moves us to council members' reports and we actually have a little time for them today, which sometimes we, we get to this. Councilmember Hoxie will see that sometimes we unfortunately get to this, you know, after 10:00 PM and there isn't a lot of time, but it really is a great opportunity for all of us to share what's happening in our Subcommittee or in, in the community or where we serve as liaisons. Any council member reports tonight?
We have all this time, but it was the holidays.
Okay, there was a couple of things that, I, I was thinking back before the holidays and there were a few things. I know that we didn't mention this and I think maybe at our, our last meeting, I don't recall if we did, you'll remind me, Mayor G, if you were Mayor G at the time, if you brought this up, there was a lovely celebration, a holiday celebration that our Parks and Rec staff worked very hard on and that a lot of us were able to attend. And in collaboration with our sister city organization. So I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, it was just, it was a very nice community celebration. I thought it was well-attended. I think it was very much enjoyed. So I'm guessing that it's very much in the mix for 2025. It looks like, I think that was the third annual one. And I certainly think it's probably going to be lasting in the Parks and Rec program, but very, very enjoyable and fun for the holidays.
I know there were quite a few residents I ran into there that really appreciated having that event here. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our Parks and Rec staff for making it happen during a very busy December.
And then can I follow up on that? Just say that we, our exchange student from the Czech Republic was wonderful and had a great time being there and presenting the awards to the winners of the gingerbread contest. He will be leaving us on January 20th and going back to the Czech Republic. The program is just one semester and so the semester ended, of course, before the holidays. And he is sad to be leaving us, but I think he's had a really wonderful experience in Arinda. And we are already reading applications for next year's person. And so the process has already begun to select the student who will come to Arinda next year, but we still are in need of a host family. And so I just wanted to put that out. If anyone knows a family that would like to host, it's a wonderful experience. Highly recommend it. Happy to talk to anyone about that. But it's been, been a great semester with the Hansa or Exchanged.
I would just say on that, if this, Sister City has something we could put into the Arinda outlook, I could put it in the weekly newsletter out of the community to find hosts.
We will get you something.
Yeah, that's great.
Wonderful. And thank you, Councilmember Hoxie and your family for hosting him. He was very charming and giving out the award.
He was.
Very poised. There's a couple of other things that happened over the holidays. I just wanted, the second was the day after our last council meeting in December, on December 18th, we had, there was a MOFD board meeting here that was a recognition for Chief Winnaker and followed by a reception and celebration. And, and I know that the city presented a proclamation to him and Councilmember G also came and both of us made brief comments and it was just a really wonderful event. So, and I, it sounds like Chief Winnaker, former Chief Winnaker, will still be in the area. So I, I'm sure we'll still be hearing from him. City manager, did you want to add anything?
I think for retired Chief Winnaker, I think he's going to be very active still in his issue of the insurance crisis and working to try and move communities forward to try and address those concerns.
And then I also wanted to give a shout out to, on December, I think it was 21st, we had an Eagle Scout Court of Honor here with eight new Eagle Scouts in Arinda and they were very excited to get their proclamations. Thank you to our city clerks. And they each got a day named in their honor as, as our tradition. They were, they and their families were very tickled by that. And then the last thing is there is an upcoming CalCities conference, which I could talk about or city manager?
Yep, I could certainly talk about it under the city manager's report. If, if.
Okay, then I'll just leave it for that. So that's all I have. Any other council member reports?
It's not really a report, it's just kind of a request and I don't really want to make it a formal matters initiated. But one of the other things that we enjoyed during the holidays was the, the pop-up holiday shop. And I think it would be great, especially for looking at our revitalization Subcommittee. But I know, I know Darren from our planning department was engaged with it as well. It would be just great if we could get some kind of a little sort of postmortem of how that really went. I know the, the lady that orchestrated it, it'd be wonderful if maybe we could get some feedback because maybe, maybe there's some possibilities for times other than just the holidays. You know, it'd be, it would be nice to understand, you know, how that all worked out.
I think it would be nice to hear from her, but also from the leasing agent. I think it would be nice to hear from her, but also from the leasing agent, Stephen Rusher, about whether or not that drew additional foot traffic to the area, so we could look at those options when there's available spaces.
I think just one last final post-holiday shout out was the Light of Arinda program with the trees was so noticeable. I mean, it just everywhere you went, it really popped, and I hope we get a chance to also recognize the initiative and the power that that group brought. And the first year out, they did a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
And that's probably a good segue to transition to our city manager report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Members of the Council. One of the things on my list was whether or not we should invite the Light of Arinda people to come receive a certificate of recognition. It sounds like there would be a willingness for us to have them come in and thank them for all the effort to make it a special time in the downtown. I wanted to just make sure that the community knows that recruitments are still underway for the commissions and committee seats that the council will consider. And so the deadline for submitting your application is January 30th. So that's my shout out for you, Sherry. I've got more publicity for that. I believe somebody's watching this. And then just a reminder to the city council, we will be having strategic planning on March 8th. I think I've got that held on your calendars now. And then as the mayor was mentioning, the California League of Cities is hosting the New City Council Members and Mayors Academy. It's January 22nd and 23rd, and I know that a couple of you are attending that and I'm looking to make arrangements to meet you up there, although I haven't been able to secure a seat at the conference. I'm trying to work on that. And then that's the update from me.
Great. Thank you. And the last thing before we leave, I really should have mentioned this in council member reports, but I think extra special gratitude goes to our city clerk and our city staff for organizing our reorganization meeting and reception, which was very, really appreciated, I think, by all of us and a lot of work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to matters initiated. Are there any matters initiated?
I don't know if matters initiated is the correct place to bring this up, but I did have a conversation with the city manager about trying to create a more formalized working relationship with within Lamorinda, similar to the Five Alley has down in Danville area. And I I feel like a lot of the issues Arinda deals with are issues that we should be talking to Maraga and Lafayette about as well. And to my knowledge, we don't have a more formal way of doing that other than through transportation committees, which are already set up. And I wondered if it would be something that would be appropriate to ask our city manager and staff to look into how we would create that and what that could achieve for us.
So so the way matters initiated works and is a topic can be brought up and we can't really discuss it, but if there's interest in bringing it back, then it could be brought back if there's a second council member that's interested in it. Is that correct?
That's right.
City attorney? Okay.
You would just phrase that as a motion. And then if there's a second, then we have a vote and it comes out. Okay, well, I would like to make that a motion. Go ahead and look into the possibility of some sort of.
I'll second that. And I actually think that's a a formal enough and a serious enough thing to look into, that we should do it as a matter of initiative.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. And do we vote on that then?
Correct.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Hoxey.
Well, thank you.
And any other matters initiated? And before we adjourn, can I just do something I should have done at the very beginning, which is a very warm welcome to Councilmember Hoxey.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here. I apologize if I misstepped at all. I'm learning the ways, but I'm very excited to be here.
Not at all. And I think you come to us with a lot of experience chairing meetings and running meetings from the school board, and we're so happy for that. Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Are we adjourning a closed session or is that complete?
We completed our closed session work prior to this meeting, so we will not be meeting in closed session.
Thank you. We are simply adjourned. The meeting is adjourned. Oh, I have to vote on the motion. Motion adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned to the regular meeting on Tuesday, January 21st at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Pull that down.